Follow.
Bert.
Eric.
Megan.
Eric.
Si.
Eric.
Mormon.
Eric.
Phil Piper.
Here.
Eric Gray.
And two, who will be in the event? Any changes here on our board's meeting? We should approve, second. Follow.
Megan.
Yes.
Si.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yeah.
Phil Piper.
Yeah.
Yep. Gray. Bert.
Yes.
Okay, number three presentation of the Division of Public Communications, pay an update on Arts Divided Board. Linda.
Give your honor. I don't know if I can stand up right now, but I'll just talk about, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, City Council, and felt that it's been care for the Arts Divided Board. My pleasure providing with an update on what we have been doing since the inception of the new Arts Board. In accordance with our missions guiding the arts around you, we've already increased awareness in charge of our community. Collaboration, participation, and education. Bringing people and families together to celebrate art and artists' commitment activity. We initiated our inaugural event on August twelfth at the Green Space. Working in concert with the city meeting, the Arts Divided Board and Arts Council Committee members, incorporated the event's racing theme into artistic activities specifically designed to encourage children to discover the artists within themselves and help them develop their talents. To that end, we succeeded. By all accounts, the event was a huge success as not only children participated in the events, all those activities, but adults did too. Out of the official attendance count, over five hundred and fifty people, at least a third of them were children who formed lines to participate in the activities we created during the entire four-hour period of the event. We had sixty-three families sign up for this event. Additional information on upcoming art, art activities that matter than alone. And the good news is, the event didn't cost the city a dime. We had, um, thanks to contributions and sponsors, just we were able to fund the entire event and even made a small profit. Both the board and other, both the board and our subcommittee, the Lunars Council Committee members are currently in the process now of developing a calendar year twenty twenty-three's event schedule and month requests just in the fall of June, January. I want to thank everybody who did attend that event to kick it off and give us your feedback, and we look forward to seeing what the future events. Any questions? Okay. So.
Number four, report standing today's day policy and review day.
Uh, yes, your honor, um, we see, uh, the player of retirement. Kind of cost. That's the. Bert, through my last review day, um, and so how we'll see with that. Sort of the global. Talk to the bottom ones.
Sure, thanks, sir. So I do know, uh, the public works director is department head hired by council. Supervised by me. According to our following policy, uh, I will put out a letter to current city employees to see if they have an individual position. Expect any one or two. That, unless you want me to do something different, that's on your receipt. They have ten days to respond once I, I think, uh, spread it out. And then I'll know. The question for the PA committee then is, would you like me to see, uh, if there are, and I expect that we'll be to do the interviews, would you like this day in interviews? And or on September nineteenth, I can report back to you and let you know. We put in a letter that just put that report on. We'll see, and at that time you can decide if you're part of the process or just having handled and throwing recommendations to you.
Question, if it's out of margin of pool, you said maybe one or two would be interested.
So my policy always is to just put it out there, our current, what is the chance?
And then.
There's somebody that applies that is not qualified in line. Yes, I'm on the side of the. I think, other than seeing. Without us. Follow that, and then we know. Say what we got, and then we.
So we would see, would you have the top, kind of your top three candidates yet, or a top three?
What I want to know is the current employees that were in a greater experience with this. And we.
And then we could review that and see if that.
We wanted to conduct the full discussion, as we want to. See what we had. Call them there. Well, follow. That's on the meeting.
Yeah, kind of gave the fire. Just let me add a bit, just to go here.
That's why.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, I'll be safe and peace even. Okay, we have two items here, we did not get the pair of us, we've brought it here. First one, the street closing application, which request is for.
So the first one is going to be, uh, what does it speak from vision to fear? Roughly, if you drive down that road, it looks like a two-block trajectory, it's really five to four blocks, it's a great mall. The, the resident, uh, would like that to close down for Halloween, uh, a whole spectrum of roads, because it's been really, um, the problem I see with that is that there are sidewalks that multi that whole road, uh, and it was very busy, very few of the others. I don't know that closing those downs necessary. If I open all the other areas that are busy. You want to shut down.
This one's a question.
We have.
We've had requests before, some of those, but we've denied them. I was just saying, I'm not actually. It was even a much less trouble here, that's one thing. My only concern with this particular request is that if we do this, I have a fear that we're not opening this in the big time. The street closures for Halloween and if you're at, you won't even have to us all the time, you don't want to say that. That children walking around Halloween night, the generations, the traffic out there. Some of this all, the parents too, who are, watch out for this, I just don't think it's both in street town. If you do that, it will open it up, you're gonna have more requests coming like that all the time. And I just don't think that's appropriate.
Biggest problem I have with this, what happens, so like traffic gets screwed up. It goes, you know, you're, it's Halloween, so every, there was a big route traffic at every.
The only thing I can move on is, uh, that's the street that will rotate part, correct?
Yes, I, I think it's got.
So being down on, like, I noticed the fire department on both sides of the street for Halloween, um, is that a problem, like, for seeing vehicles coming down?
What's done?
It, you, when they park in those side streets like that, when they park, at least for fire trucks, it's tight all the time, regardless of Halloween or whatever, so.
Actually, I don't know if I'm. Down there. Well, we. Sitting wider. Here in Halloween. Like to get a, do this, everyone can be able to turn someone off down at once, too. It's busy. It's just a, very, it can be, you know, I mean, if, and if we did through something like this and we went down the road and we just started doing this, we're gonna have. That means you could wear like a cold stat or something. Just in the area. We're gonna have a lot of money. Yeah, well, well, I'm fine here. I think that's a little bit different.
There's, there's traffic, you know, what's, I don't know what's different about the street relative to many other street. Only.
In my mind, it's a question.
Sure.
How many children in this four-block area fall, could be knocked?
So, I guess my young experience along that was briefly ago, every Halloween, I'm there, um, and I, I mean, they get a lot of kids, and I know usually like the fire department who drive down that street. Um, did it last year, and I think the police department came and came out, I mean, it's a bigger street, a lot more volume, I just, I don't know the exact number, but. There's a handful of locations throughout the city that seem to draw a lot of people, people drive to take a look. And that is one of fires like that. Uh, I will say that in this area, though, there are sidewalks the entire length of this.
Having raised by four boys. I want to see what it hurts to closing. And so what if there's street barriers in the community that want to close their street, or they're bringing only out? What does it really hurt?
Well, I think the main part is just, uh, them walking it off, having something there, we do, and then he had something on their own, but we've locked it up. New cities that will let people, I don't remember.
No, that's a new levels.
They have to put up their own stuff.
And then you might get into a situation where somebody else sees that and say, oh, we can just walk off this street.
Oh, girls. In my mind, they, the sidewalks are both, but, well, they're kind of different, but sort of they won't give the wall, it's either forever.
I guess taking the open, it's like the fourth of July.
Just wanted to remind the council that from and free, what it's called, that downtown, and they just opened that up. Because I believe the street was shut off there, they want, so, I mean, kids do have an avenue to go. To say, what's an end of the place, just to pick up.
If it was a city event, we'd.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna wait, make more to the night. Next time. Follow.
Si.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yeah.
Boyanson, yes, Gray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yeah.
Megan.
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next item is the street closure application for the, the, the room and green. That is for the light display that, um, we had two of them now in Weyrush. That's how he's had a trick from last year. Uh, and we were were we closed for both, and then we, you closed? We were closed for both, yeah, okay. Uh, Chief, you had any report on how that all went down?
Um, the Halloween one last year was just going to be, um, was well received, well attended, and by officers, we had no complaints for the road being closed, where officers had no issues with traffic around that.
I.
I'm gonna make a second go back. I actually had a few complaints on that, that was the detour route going fifth street. So we actually detoured it Thanksgiving, or Thanksgiving, Christmas. Over the sixth street, which weren't all there, so, and that would get pretty enough attention, but.
Oh, okay.
We had a few complaints from the neighboring that between the extra parking issues and the extra traffic with that. So we take the detour out, so like people were part of it, have that extra traffic.
Yeah, that, I, that, that road fifth street is incredibly down under that hill.
Yeah.
It makes it really difficult. If we can off six, that three hundred and sixty. Or.
That is.
I went down, there's probably a smile.
Um, you know, sometimes the Halloween still up. And then most people are very curious, it's us, it's becoming equal for it, so, I think. Um, and so for anyone that asked in the earlier, there was being previous to question this one, okay, this is one block on a major road, as we know, we discussed last year, the pros and cons of it, we had decided that public safety recommendation that it's probably safer to have it closed, so the people that are along the sidewalks, they venture out the street, more good, jitter traffic, and that is also a little bit of gray, you know, going forward the other way, so we just wanted to make sure that it was the for your hands, or somebody who might have heard of the house, and I think that decision would be successful. So, based on that, I would make sure I can be, we go ahead, approve this request.
Awesome.
Follow.
Mormon.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Boyanson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yeah.
Megan.
Yes.
Si.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, what did I? Ten, I believe, if I'm mistaken, we were on twenty-first at four thirty-two AM. If there are any items, but, uh, we're not, we're not going to roll those out.
Okay, next up, the Dolly Committee. Uh, our report, uh, we're all in, sorry. Um, yeah, we, uh, I don't already know this, but Bill and I attended the intercity chamber, primary intercity visit on the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. And, uh, before we get started with this, I get a little PowerPoint chunks and think that we saw. Um, all three of these cities are Main Street, Iowa City. Um, and you probably know that we didn't, we see that accreditation, uh, that issue process this last year. They will reapply in twenty-four, so every other year we apply, but all three of these cities are Main Street City. I've been to a lot of these types of, uh, scenarios, uh, at meetings, this was probably one of the best that I've ever been to. Ames Chamber did a fantastic job, the people that made the presentations in these three cities were fantastic, had tons of information for us, I wish I could share all of it with you. Um, but as we go through this, we'll kind of, uh, highlight some of the things that we saw, Bill can feel free to jump in anytime. On here, this is a picture of the new YMCA in Marion, uh, they partnered with the city. The twenty, twenty-one million dollar project. Go ahead, we'll next slide. Um, that shows you the cardio area, the swimming pool, one of the classrooms, I believe they have four classrooms that side. Go ahead, uh, there is a weight pool, slide pad type thing for kids attached to the main pool, basketball, pickleball courts. They have six pickleball courts going, two full-size gymnasiums, and that's the walking track, which is pretty length wide, like. Right across the street from there is the Marion Fire Station, I put this in for Justin. It's a ten million dollar project, it's a gorgeous facility, it's their headquarters. Um, now, uh, you can see the outside of the building on the left there, and it was in interior of the building, and a picture across the street. Then we went to the Marion Public Library, another huge project in downtown Marion. Their old library was destroyed by the creature. So this is the new one right across the street from the old one. Excellent slide. On the interior, they have, um, this is an eighteen million dollar project. Fifty-four thousand square feet on the interior there, you can see a child, child, children activity area, there's a coffee house, reading area there. The third one from the left is private study rooms, and then the last one at the U area. This, this library had dedicated spaces to every individual group of age group of kids. It's just an amazing facility, here you see the, the daycare center, well, not daycare center, but the, the preschool area, again, the interactive area. Far side that's, uh, interactive area. The amenities interactive areas for all age groups, coffee shop, reading area, private, private, uh, rooms with computer access, DVD, uh, Reynolds, video gaming area, they have a couple of Xboxes and stuff, this wasn't open, they were scheduled to open in, I think, thirty days at the time we were there, they have a sound, a full-fledged sound studio there, so the kids can go in there and make recordings and stuff like that. Um, learning, they have senior computer and learning assistants, uh, community, uh, event stage, rental, professional, they have a professional culinary kitchen there for a whole, uh, cooking classes and all kinds of stuff there, so, it's pretty impressive. From Marion, we went to Lo Park, it's, uh, the Lo family building at a hundred and sixty acres, and they, the city spent four million dollars developing trails. And on the left there, you see the, the community center, like inside that community center, in the center picture is the parks, uh, an art gallery sponsored by the Marion Arts Council, it's gorgeous, there's art throughout that entire building, in the hallways and stuff like that. Showcase, and that one on the far left, sorry, it's such a faraway picture, but that's the pavilion. They hold concerts, weddings, other events, whatever, people can rent that, but they hold citywide, city-sponsored concerts out there. And the one that he had at the fourth of July, I believe he said he had five thousand people there. Pretty impressive. The Lo Park amenities, our door, our door pavilion for concerts, welcome center house, giving round spaces, welcome center also has Marion Art and helps families. Park sits in a hundred and fifty acres donated by Lo families, they spent two million dollars on the trail, the park, there's artwork and sculpture all along that trail. As people walk, walk, and I think it, it took us three months. Um, we're going down to the alley of projects in Marion, this was something that really caught our attention, I think, though, when we, this is pretty impressive, they took one of their alleys. And they spent a million dollars, they took all the utilities from the alley and moved it underground, so there's nothing overhead. And then opened up this up, down that alley, there are places to sit, there's a stage, on the left there, you can see the stage and a performing area for live music and stuff, a lot of the businesses moved to the back of their building. Alleywaying out, they had a coffee shop and a little restaurant out back, um, and sculpture and artwork all the way down, it was pretty impressive. Um, the alley project. I don't like to read that. City reduced all the, uh, removed all the overhead utilities and carried down, put up, uh, shops and restaurants with, uh, outdoor seating. Seating installed the stage for the live music with, uh, outdoor seating. Artwork lines this, this entire street, it's just very impressive, and the parcade that they're going to put in, uh, which is at the end of this alley project, blocked off half a street, and now it's a parcade, they put in, uh, fireplaces and stuff for people to sit and fall, it's just very impressive, a lot of concrete work and brickwork. Main Street Takeaways from Marion. Calling life issues lead the way, dance, festival, economic development, arts, trails, community events, park and rec, wellness center, that's all part of this project. They also have some pretty, uh, impressive apartment complexes that are going in, they, the city bought, what was it, three blocks, four, demoed it leveled it, and now, uh, high-end apartment complexes are going in there, retail on the bottom, business on second floor, apartments at the top. Main Street, Iowa, um, this is my old hometown, which I did not recognize, I went out there. Uh, pretty, pretty impressive, downtown is private right now, and it was a ghost town at one time, I think DJ and I were both from there, and we were talking about it, I think there's only three original businesses that are remaining down there. The rest of them, you can spend two, three days down there and, and have something. The new River Plaza Place, this is a forty million dollar project, forty-five million dollar project, built on the Brownfield site. Um, it's not old, I, I used to work at that Brownfield site, so. Now it's all this new improved stuff, this is their River Plaza Central atrium, or Central E Place back in the situation, go to the next. Those are the apartments that they're building that overlook this center. Jaces River Plaza. Go ahead. Um, they hold events down there, free, free events, city-sponsored, um, well, they're sponsored by, uh, local businesses and stuff like the city, it's free events with the people, they had the Christmas event, DJ said that he took the kids down to their Christmas event, they said they had five thousand people. So you can imagine how packed that grid is. I put that one on the left in there for you, Linda, those are umbrellas that fold up and can be extended out over to provide shade.
Cool, I've got the name of the company that also makes those, so.
Yeah, they're really nice, and they can be retracted when the wind blows, it's easy up and down, don't block too much view. That center section there is all artificial grass. It's beautiful, and then go.
Yeah, we actually, uh, have requested a company out of the beta that does this, they're coming to do one, to look at the group space, to give us an idea what that costs. People who named it, issue these things like that.
And if we did that, then we could set the painting tables like we want to do, and put up these umbrellas and stuff, and they'd be permanent. Staff would have that match with them, I think it'd be a bridge downtown, I think the Green Space would become kind of a focal point downtown, and you need to expand on that around. That's our story. Um, so, Cedar Falls Takeaways, uh, planning, it was key to spend Matthew Brownfield project, they, they had two years of planning for this project and everything went well, they, they covered all their base. We didn't have any issue. Partnership with developer was key, his word, nothing happens anymore with downtown, I cannot fumble without tip, state tax credit for it. That was his exact word, they had an impressive developer, they know. This guy is, really has it going on, and, and, uh, nothing happens without tip, they had. They also have a full-time city planner, is a key to the push, push the, promote, or review this project. Community input, vision section, the community buying and support, small to medium donations drove this project, the River Plaza project. Amenities again, heated road, parks, trails, the arts, wellness, and fitness. Okay? This is Dubuque. Um, Dubuque is, we weren't, we couldn't attend the entire session, but we went to the morning session. Uh, this is artwork that they have downtown, they have a, I think they told us over forty murals like this all around now, this is in the downtown area. Uh, uh, ten years ago, Main Street, the sixth block of Main Street went down to about fifteen percent occupancy. Um, and most of those that were occupying those spaces were kind of shady type businesses. That's pretty nicely, and it's, now they're running about ninety-five percent occupancy with businesses, with this stuff downtown. Um, really about revitalized, of course, they have this Dubuque River Walk, which is really impressive, and their convention center that's long side of it, which the media cities was at two years ago. Uh, which is really impressive. Okay? They have a millwork district, this is their old industrial downtown district that they have converted, people are buying these buildings, they're converting them, again, retail on the bottom, off business and office on second floor. And the remaining floors are typically apartments. Takeaways, and they added the city manager to head up the efforts and put products, acquire grants, chamber activity, participate. Their chamber is very, very active in Dubuque, they hold, they have, last year they held three hundred and sixty events. At Dubuque. Um, and six block, and I told you about downtown. Uh, they actually were losing population, and they had to make a decision whether they were going to salvage downtown or not. And they decided to go all in with downtown renovations, and now their population is growing exponentially, they had to add looking to add sixteen hundred more acres to the industrial park area. Downtown, or up in industrial park area, because they, it's all. Downtown or industrial park area, because it's all full now. Yes, that, overall takeaways. Community and citizen input and buying is key, nothing happens without it. Uh, forming partnerships with developers and businesses, also key. Use the tip and the swivel. All in a foundation compared to hire a city planner to work with developers and form partnership with business. Form a fundraising, go through grants and public and private fundraising, this is a full time, it's not a break. It's just so much work involved in economic development, getting these companies to step in, buying and how to plan this out. Uh, we're based events, depending right now, our industrial park area, so, uh, there's a lot of things going on. Next one.
This is the last one, overall dayboards.
In their common amenities. Okay, well, common amenities, and I, I need that, I can hit it out and cheat for you, uh, trails for hiking and biking is a big deal. Uh, in Marion, no housing development goes in unless the developer puts a trail that attaches to it. Just the way it is. Arts and co-activity is a huge deal as well. Partners in recreation facility director, rector, green space areas and city sponsored event, wellness and fitness facility, children activity and programs. The library, see the library for, for main open. Like I said, there was so much information and so many, so many good ideas about how to do things and what to take up that I think, uh, they, they, pretty impressive. And then I put down a couple of things for your consideration, something to think about. Um, they, they hold, two of these communities hold vision sessions with their community. Community comes in, they tell, they, they express what their vision is for the community and how they think it should grow. And then the city takes that and kind of runs it. Prioritizes it and, and I think we should start small, it's going to be smaller projects. See if we can get that done and see if that spawns anything else and it's even growth. But, um, like I said, for your consideration, I just take a look at those things and, uh, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I want to, uh, kind of, follow up that conversation and share a little bit about the Main Street and see how much of this is going to buy in with what you learned and, uh, especially you were talking about the process where they reviewed, we had met with the Main Street reps, um, upon, upon the sixteen. And this was after we had done that presentation and our application was not through. But then we had two points of their, um, reps, um, and they were, and they kind of wanted to walk through our application and explain why we weren't selected the first time. With strong encouragement, of course, we would write in and direct next, you know, when we put it in. Um, and they recommended, and I will send the part I want you to think about is, they recommended that we do a downtown assess. That is done by the Iowa economic development, of course. And so, similar to what you're talking about, it's kind of.
We just met the downtown code today, and board me, and Mike had that schedule.
It hasn't already been, as they said, four to five people come to the community and then really, really look at their strengths and weaknesses. And they said that really, ties in nicely with the Main Street application, they said, then you use that information when we are revisiting that whole process. And use a lot of what they found in this assessment.
We're gonna, if we're gonna qualify for Main Street, we need to pack some of these projects prior to, to build our resume for that.
I agree, I think we need to start so that we don't just put it on hold, and I know I had talked out to other businesses. Select or not, but even those sidewalk squares where we have spaces that we can do some really nice patterns or bricks or some sort of color pattern and at least get started on some kind of projects where we're, we don't look like we can put it on hold and we're not doing anything, so we want to keep moving ahead.
On that parcade project, they had the entrance. Concrete and standing pretty nice.
Right, and I know.
That's the cheapest way we can get by with doing that is pour those in and stand.
And, and make them colored, and I know I was in the eighties today and their whole downtown area, the whole sidewalk, it's out of color with color.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the smaller projects that we can have. And like I said, build that resume.
The other, the other point they can share with us was, they said, we had, we had done a really good job with some key investors. In the application and our process and support, they said we really would need a broader base of smaller investors, smaller support and a larger group, so, um, and I think part of that was just how quickly we pulled that together. Uh, in about a month and a half, so we did really have to find to get the word out and, and I think share as much as we could have. Um, the other thing I know they talked about is just that last point on, um, the area that we had targeted for our Main Street plan, they really felt was a large area and, and many, I don't know what the site in Marion, but you know, a lot of the communities are smaller than what we are looking at, and I think we had about a hundred ninety three uh, facilities, buildings in our area, and they said that was a large area for us to take on right in the beginning, and maybe we want to start with a little off, you know, kind of providing sections for it. Anyway, um, they had really said, if we proceed without assessment, it might be a good step for us in order to move ahead.
Um, last thing before we move now. This takes buying from city council. From the city as a whole, the chamber, CBB, everybody has to be involved. It has to be a partnership. This, this inviting and undermining that's going on has to stop, they said that. If one person falls away from this, tries to undermine this, it all falls apart. It just, it's, it's kind of a cascading effect, they, they emphasize that over and over, department has to be strong and resolved. And so, if we want to do this, yes, thank you. And my department reports, go ahead and finish with that, the other kind of report.
The firm has nine, and still all that, yeah, civic systems. And they are the company that we, out of the two pool, decided that we live the past. Um, for the whole day, demonstrating the pop line. Um, and we did not get any, any comments really from any of the departments. So people like, uh, to move forward, unless there's some people who aren't with.
Uh, city attorney, gentlemen, you have a report. Uh, department for as well.
So thank you, try to get through them here quick. Pits are out to line fifty two hundred and fifty feet of sanitary sewer in South Boone, South Green, South Story. Woodland areas, uh, woodland infusion. With that area, I think it's really, with that done with a lot of money. Uh, we are also planning a crack ceiling project that we haven't done in a while. This year's project is supposed to come to the frantic pit to drive, which is the newer asphalt road, Drew goes far and preserve it. That's bank, but, yeah, concerns on that. And we're going to do industrial park road from Arvo East to the city limit, that was the reason why Wayne was here. You're back. You look at eleven street, because it was a new streets project, and they said wait another year until cracks take all the way across the road and we'll address that. Track for one this year, so Wayne, planning on late fall here, decide the weather is too cold, they're going to push the spring and they that's the judgment, that's, that's going to be important out of the asphalt, see them around. WHKS, our thump pump inspection program, and I'm finishing the inspection of the city manholes tomorrow. And just a reminder that Thursday at eight, at five PM is our II thump pump program meeting. Over here in information meeting, uh, throwing over there. And then on the last note, people that are having some lighting projects coming forward, would you guys, just wanted to give you a heads up, so think about it and keep things in mind. The, uh, there are going to be web park, south Marion pavement projects. Right now, our engineers have run something from the line, so I'm just letting you know, get it back to mind, if you'd rather it be wood holes with overhead wires versus concrete holes like outside talent underground wire. They need your substantial cost savings to the wood and a better lighting. But that will be a proposal over in matter, and it's what I'm seeing, I I don't see too many other options, but that's staying here to putting a program together for there. The other one and the choices are possibly going to be either match the development of a fiber box pole, which aligns deals about provide ample light to the type of area, or very susceptible to damage. Versus a concrete pole, and that will be on your Hancock Drive extension to the school development from Hancock Jackson out to Airport Road. And these will be coming forward, and like I said, I'm just giving you a heads up to kind of think what you'd like to see in those areas for development.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir, in your package, it's definitely a substantial completion for the south Main Street water main project, that's part of, uh, our, our, money that we're using. Uh, the project is substantially completed. Uh, public works agreed with us, they better walk through their development, their budget list for that project, but that project is substantially completed, uh, more than proof, uh, this is.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Times?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Uh, next up, Chief Lebo.
Uh, good evening, your honor, in the packet tonight, there's a fireworks application for the Boone Speedway for the Saturday night, uh, as they do have done for the last several years, it's a small fireworks show to lead off their final races, um, of the evening, and I will open it up for questions. A question my head is, why is it so late, is the gal that normally does this, was waiting on some, uh, certification stuff process from the ATF, which has been very slow to come back, so normally it'd been here a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, they were trying to get all that stuff wrapped up, so. Otherwise I'll take it. No, no, yeah, exactly. So with that, I'll take a motion, if there's no questions.
Williamson, yes, Frank?
Yes.
Bert?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Times?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Nothing further, sir.
Uh, next up, Chief Lebo.
Yes, your honor, uh, council, we have for you a civil service list, um, you know, we have an opening in the police department. Uh, we're in the middle of our hiring process and, and part of that is, um, the ability test, the written test, and the civil service interview. Uh, we completed all three of those and the civil service commission brought forward these five days. Candidates that they think should belong to the public. Why do you see a moment?
Frank?
Yes.
Bert?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Times?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yeah.
Mike and Sam, yes.
Thank you. City commissioner, no.
They're on your desk or, uh, if you remember the last time, we've got some programs that do all. I place it, we talked about it, we passed on your, on your desk. For your input, I'm hoping that you thought about it, we'll ask about the contributions on, since it's the last council meeting, use the things that, uh, that we have discussed in the past. Staff who made these decisions, it's so huge, but this is the time for public, like, excuse me, for council of input on what they would like to see. We discussed technology, uh, last time, we did the mites and we're moving forward with that. We have budgeted seven five thousand dollars out of our cell tax club. The, uh, backfill money we have put in, uh, city hall budget under repairs. We have add some money to it, although I'll tell you, we've had some repairs lately that have cost. And so that is the level, we still have, hopefully, probably forty thousand of that, if you remember, I talked to you last time about the, for, like, playing on the outside of the building. Mike was our main person moving forward with that, uh, so we can get that done, but, uh, looking for some guidance, uh, on what you'd like to see. Uh, the auditory enforcement, we talked about before, that would be an expensive project. Uh, Mike can certainly look into that, uh, to see what that would be. Uh, I know that if you talk about floor replacement, not before you're talking, that's a ton of money. One option will be to look to see if it can be repaired and then stripped and waxed. I don't know that that's the best option, but that is an option. Uh, otherwise you have a list in front of you, uh, if you want to give us some guidance on how you want us to proceed.
Can't do it all.
I, uh, I've said for quite a while, I don't see this room up there. The main reason is that, I mean, it's kind of a focal point of people, it's called a theater. Beer shop. It's, it's, it's nice, I mean, it brings back a lot of the children. But, uh, we are in New York, and I think some of that could be included, different than this, you know. Uh, technology, frankly, we guess is all.
That's important, yeah.
And I think these, I agree, yes. These restrooms out here. I mean, yeah, they, they, yeah. People that. So you already budgeted money for the mites, one of their technologies.
Well, the mite, that money, uh, Eli will come out in seventy five thousand.
Very under technology, I don't think.
Well, but that, I think what Andre looked at was a camera that's unlooking. That we call, and, yeah, other than that.
And the, the high school or more meetings, or the library or the high school, that's what's the setup for that.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any. Not once. I had a lot of anything. I mean, one option could be, if I could, uh, we talked about the benches before, staff has talked about that, and we actually like the benches. Not that they couldn't do some upkeep, I don't know if, uh, they can be stripped or painted, or not painted, but stained, and we think they have all the other wood in here that matches it. Oh, I don't know if that's something, I know we can start with the, with the desks and the bathrooms. And then see where we're at, but money wise, if you want. Okay, so we, uh, what I'm getting from this is start with the restrooms and the desks. Some other updates I have, um, just to give you an idea, we had an increase in the path on line for our water plant, if you will, a little bit of a little tour plant. We got notice of a, you know, a fifteen percent increase of, of line. Water facility, so it goes through a ton of that, our budget is two hundred thousand dollars for all chemicals there that we, we were already ahead of it, I'm assuming that's, that's probably the budget and then we can take that. But those are not, it's even lies. Uh, regarding on the communication director, the issue we talked about in the past, I'm still working on uh, some partners that, the partner was, as we talked about, and we did not fill the forty, forty hours for that, so.
So I'm still working on it. Uh, I had a conversation with Chamber, part of that, and he has designed and moving on. And so that kind of goes into that, but I'm working with this, every agency to see if we can come up with something. New B project continues to move forward, uh, we've gone to secondly. We've identified it, folks working on, and the clarifiers, it's at the end of the process. So we're working on, uh, how we're going to increase that. Uh, I brought on S E H, uh, to spend more time on this project on behalf of the city. Quite frankly, I still haven't time. And it's taking a lot of my time, and I don't have the air. So I'm just, we're bringing on the area of S U D, so that's already been helpful. Uh, we'll, you updated, we have had some roadblocks on this project, I'm figuring that. And we'll continue to move forward and get the project completed according to the D N R standards. Although we have that city roadblocks and areas helping. So if you have any questions on that, ever, let me know. Uh, I'm happy to report that we received word last week that the senior project in twenty-second wind was approved with X credits. That is a seven point six million dollar project that is now being received. Uh, it's possible, uh, when they start on that project, probably in the spring of twenty-three, we'll bring forward a development agreement that you, you've already supported in the past. Uh, that was simple, yeah, patient with I P A. So, uh, we'll continue, we'll run that, but that's going to be some portion. We're looking at probably a starting rate with a summer twenty-four completion for the senior project. Uh, we're looking at in October, um, famine project, if that's the same location. We're looking at a groundbreaking, uh, track that you can get there in a few days, the first week of October. It's not, it's not bombing yet. But I would encourage the entire council to attend that. This is a huge project. If you add those two together on that one site, grow with fifteen million dollar investment, so that's very good news. We need to find. I'm sorry.
We're looking at, or possibly October fifth and sixth. I don't have a time yet. Uh, yeah, working with the developer, working with A T C. A T C will do all the work for the groundbreaking and all the work that you all know. Uh, number six consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like to do instead of separately, or if not, I mean, we'll move the group, like, all at all?
Bert?
Yep.
Megan?
Yep.
Times?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yeah.
Good. Number seven ordinance is A, second reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-one, and then finding zone commission ordinance chapter twenty-three, section twenty-three, one thirty-one. System seven, number four, nine, uh, the more residents of the city, funded by the mayor, something to be cool by the council. All roll.
Megan? Hi.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yeah.
Bert?
Yes.
Okay, the second reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-two adds stop sign regulations on Hancock Drive and Salt Jacks. Chapter sixty-five, section. Second. All roll.
Times?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yeah.
Phil Piper?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Great. Uh, no comments. C B number nine, uh, no other comments.
Just had one, uh, night on the green wrapped up, their final event. I was unable to attend, but I heard it's, it's, it's that. During the course of the year, over three thousand people attended that, those five events. So that's pretty impressive. I think Chris, C B B, uh, nice Green Committee did a great job organizing that and promoting it. Hopefully that should be better, uh, throughout the planning stages of the next year. So I encourage you guys to come whenever you get a chance next year, and it should be, it should improve, so.
Any other comments? Any public comments, if I have any? Yes, sir.
Thank you, mayor, for giving me a couple minutes here. By my, the reference, I have seven A definitely.